Okay, I'm calling this meeting of Cleveland Heights City Council to order. It is October 7th, 2024, at about eight, I'm sorry, 7:48. Addie, would you call the roll?
Cobb.
President.
Kuta.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell. Petrus.
Here.
Posh.
Here. And just to let the record show, Vice President Russell is joining us via Zoom. Not quite, quite up to par yet, but you're getting there.
Mr. President, let me point out, as a non-voting participant--
Yes, thank you. Any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I motion to add Resolution 192-2024 to first readings.
All right.
Second.
There's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Approval of the minutes for August 5th and August 19th. Seeing no objections, we'll move to communications with the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to read several things into the record, make them a matter of record. For one, sealed bids were received on August 30th, 2024, for Project 2415, Denison Park Pickleball Court Project. Two companies submitted bids. Geoga Highway submitted the lowest and best bid in the amount of $221,392.60. Second, I'd like to let you know that sealed bids were received on October 2nd, 2024, for Project Number 2407, SSO Control of CH13 and CH61, Hampshire Road Project. Three companies submitted bids. Fabrizi Trucking and Paving submitted the lowest and best bid in the amount of $1,216,671. And last, I'd like to request permission to go to bid for the following projects. And we may have to wait until the law director gets back to advise whether or not a separate motion is required for each project. But the projects include 2412, SSO of CH30, South Taylor Project; Project 2413, Sanitary Sewer Pipe Repair Project, SSPR, and that's Phase 2; and 2414, the Denison Park Turf Replacement and Rehab Project. And we've got three projects that I'm requesting to go for bid. Mr. Law Director, if you would let the council know if there requires a separate motion for each project, or if they can move to allow the administration to go for bid for all three at once.
They can move to allow all three to go to bid at once. If that motion fails, then you can separate them.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion to allow all three projects to go for bid?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, counsel. So I did want to announce a few more things. The first is to thank all of the sponsors and volunteers, like Councilman Petrus, who participated in and created a successful, happy 5K over the weekend, yesterday. Especially, I want to give special credit to Adam at The Wine Spot and Melody Hart as well, who participated a lot in the after-party planning and execution. It was a really fantastic day. Obviously, the weather was very cooperative for the race. And I think things went off without much of a hitch at all. We had over 650 registrants, I believe, maybe 660. And astonishingly good time. And so I'm grateful to all the people who contributed to that. And I, you know, in addition to that, we also had a, I want to congratulate Kane Park and the Kane Park Performance folks for a successful season capped off really, really memorably by what might be a record-breaker. My morning jacket completely sold out. I believe there was something in the, to the tune of 2,750 tickets sold. I had to go take a look at the crowd myself. It was phenomenal. And, you know, that was the last show of their tour and the last show of the Kane Park season. It was really great what they've done over there this season, and so I just wanted to congratulate them on a successful season. And then lastly, I wanted to just talk about a trip that I took recently. I was privileged and honored to participate in the Mayor's Against Illegal Guns Summit. We kicked it off, actually, by surprise, at the White House. We were invited to take a look and be a part of the celebration of the first year of the White House office on gun violence prevention. And we were able to witness President Biden sign a couple different executive orders related to gun violence prevention. And that was not anticipated. It's sort of a quick shift in plans. Everytown for Gun Safety sponsored this event, and they work with, actually, a Cleveland Heights resident named Ariel Cathcart, who is their associate director and is responsible for outreach to mayors all across the country. So I want to thank Ms. Cathcart and Everytown for Gun Safety for letting me participate in this. We screened a movie called The Body Politic, which is a documentary that recounts some of the experience that Mayor Brandon Scott in Baltimore, you know, has gone through both, you know, running for mayor and then as mayor, dealing with gun violence in Baltimore. And I just, I felt extremely privileged to be around this group of mayors who are dealing with some of the same problems that we're dealing with around illegal guns and around gun violence. And I, you know, to a scale, that can feel extremely daunting. They were talking about working to get below 300 murders in Baltimore and, you know, working through what is called a group violence reduction strategy, which includes some of the things that we're working on here, but adds some more things that I'll be working with, both the Mayor's Against Illegal Guns and Everytown, to try to see what we can implement around here in Cleveland Heights and regionally with some of our regional partners. So I just wanted to express to the people of Cleveland Heights and the council a little bit of insight that I received from that trip, and I'm looking forward to bringing some more information and expertise to bear on some of the gun violence strategies that will hopefully benefit our community. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We move on to the city administrators' report. Okay, thank you. And no departmental reports. Report of Clerk of Council.
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move to public comment. First, we're gonna, this will be for legislative items only. How many do we have, Addie?
We have three for legislative items.
Okay. So Addie will call your name. Please come up, repeat your name and your address or the street you live on. You'll have three minutes. There's the timer right up there. And Addie, go ahead and call the first name.
Vershaun Grimes.
Hello, my name is Norman Dosreese. I live with Vershaun. Oh, I'm sorry. So we stay at 1021 Pembroke Road, and we have a business. We have a snow cone trailer.
I'm sorry, you have what?
A snow cone trailer. So it's like a food truck, but it's a trailer, it's not a truck. We received a violation that you cannot have boats, campers, and trailers in Cleveland Heights. We live on, we stay in a corner house. Someone reported us. But I mean, if we had, it's people in the area that have the same thing. They have no issue with it. Our trailer, like I say, it's not a truck. It has to be towed. So it's not loud, it's new, it's not an eyesore or anything like that. We usually work Thursday to Sunday, so it's not even there that many days, but it's our business. We do it five, six days a week. I just wanted to know, you know, how we could go about getting that changed, like, if we could do anything to get updated to where we don't have to get rid of our business or, you know, store our trailer because it's expensive to store or build a shed or something like that. Because we stay in a corner house, our driveway isn't but 10 feet at the most, 12 feet. So I really don't have anywhere else to put it. We were just trying to see what, how we could go about doing that.
Sure. So we can, you know, turn that over to the administration. I'm sure the law director could cite the, maybe not this moment, but, you know, the ordinance. But you're kind of saying two things. You're saying that the ordinance is being enforced, you feel selectively, because you said other people.
Yeah, and we stay on a corner house.
Okay.
It's right there from any direction that you come from, but it's not a huge trailer. And like I said, I drive a Yukon Denali. My truck is as big as the trailer, it's not huge.
And the second issue is, is there an alternative, like a place for you? See, that's not something that counsel would deal with directly, but the administration may have some ideas. So Addie, if you would, will we have your information, and somebody from the administration can get back to Norman? I'm sorry, Norman, I didn't get your last name.
Dosreese.
Dosreese?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm just slightly familiar with this particular situation. And I, what I've been made aware of is that, and, you know, I, just to assure you, our inspectors here did not sort of select, self-select to enforce this. This was, you know, brought to the city's attention. And the, you know, the violation itself, you know, there's only so much latitude that they have relative to the enforcement of such things. But I think that this is something that counsel could potentially take up for discussion. I know that it's maybe a bit late for that, but there could be some, at least, beginning evaluation of the specific code section that this pertains to in tomorrow's Housing and Building Committee meeting, if the committee's willing to take a look at maybe finding some space that would allow for, or a reexamination of this particular regulation that might allow for a bit more fertile ground for home-based businesses. And, you know, things, when this code was, you know, written, maybe we had a different set of circumstances in the city, different lifestyles, different expectations for how people work. And, you know, perhaps the entrepreneurial spirit that we've developed is not something that they anticipated in the Cleveland Heights that wrote this code. And so maybe this is something that we can take a look at legislatively as well. So I just wanted to pose that as a possibility.
Just to add a little bit more as well, this is a conversation that Planning Commission has had for a couple of years now. It's part of a recommendation and a broader look at that for this exact reason. Everything from food trucks, trailers, to landscapers, the dynamic has truly changed. The other issue is, just for the public understanding, is because of the width of some of our driveways, some folks have way more room and space for those than others to be able to move them to the back. And so it's created this space where it's really uneven how things are operating. So there's absolutely, I'm looking interested to have this conversation with the council, but this is something that absolutely the Planning Commission and members of the Planning Commission have also raised as a absolutely potential issue that we need to really explore so that this doesn't continue to happen.
Thank you for taking this to our attention.
Could I request that the law department send us the relevant section of the codified ordinances so that we could take a look at it during our committee meeting?
Very good. Go ahead, Addie can call.
Marty Gelfand.
Who?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Counsel, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Law Director, public. My name is Marty Gelfand. I live at 3049 Meadowbrook Boulevard. I spent the first 18 years of my life at 1892 South Compton. My sisters and I were baby boomers during those early years when we, the schools were filled, and there were 11 elementary schools in Cleveland Heights and University Heights, including 10 in our system, the CHUH system, and one in East Cleveland. That one's still there. A lot of them, you know, with not so many babies anymore in subsequent generations. The population of our schools has shrunk, and we have buildings that we still have, some we don't have, that aren't being used the way they once were. There were four junior highs back then, and of course, one high school. And, you know, I'm thinking about the Coventry Peace Campus building. It was an elementary school at one point, now it's not. In a parallel universe, that building might be where vocational education happens. In a parallel universe, that might be a University Heights park. In a parallel universe, it might be used as storage. In a parallel universe, it might be leveled to the ground like my junior high Roosevelt was. In a parallel universe, it might be used for all kinds of different things. But in this universe, the Coventry Peace Building is used for some very fine organizations and activities that the people of Cleveland Heights and University Heights and a piece of South Euclid use every day. My daughter has been, throughout her elementary years, was active with Lake Erie, Inc., since she's been in middle school and now high school. She's very active with Artful. I'm on the Board of Reaching Heights, although I don't speak for Reaching Heights, but I, you know, it's, there are a lot of really good things happening in that building. And it wasn't based on a decision by some board that this is what's going to happen here, that this is going to be torn down, that this is going to be used for storage. This is based on a natural, organic happening that's ours, that belongs to the people. Now, I realize that the library board has title to the building currently. And in a parallel universe, the library board in the state of Ohio might be elected or something like that, but they're not. You are. And I understand that you're going to be having a meeting with the library board tomorrow. It really belongs to us. It belongs to the people. And I just want you to go into that meeting that you're going to have with that in mind. It belongs to the people. The fact that they have title is an accident of history. It is what it is, but it really belongs to us. So please, keep that in mind when you meet with them.
Good evening, counsel. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Brady Dindia. I live on Westwood Road in University Heights. First, I want to sincerely thank city council for this resolution that you are prepared to vote on this evening. It means so much to know that you stand with us in recognizing the importance of saving the Coventry Peace Building, not just for the nonprofits, but for the entire community that benefits from the programs and services we provide. Your support tonight is a significant step forward, and we are truly grateful. However, we are down to days, not weeks. Our nonprofit tenants are facing an uncertain future. Without immediate lease extensions, the valuable work they do, whether it's in arts, education, or services for our most vulnerable, they will be at risk of ending. The community relies on these programs, and we simply cannot afford any further delays in securing their future. Tomorrow's meeting with the library is a positive next step, but it's critical that we reach a resolution soon. The pressure and leadership you've shown can't stop here. We need your continued involvement to ensure that the library grants the extensions we need to keep operating while we work toward a long-term solution. With this resolution, we are one step closer to establishing a permanent home for the arts in a city that prides itself on being home to the arts. But without a bridge from where we stand today to a longer-term solution, there is a real risk this remarkable coalition could be forced to scatter by the end of the year. We are currently making decisions and considering decisions on new locations or closure, and those decisions will be made in the coming days. With your help, I'm confident we can preserve this space as a hub for creativity, learning, and community engagement for years to come. Thank you again for your support. Let's keep the momentum going and protect the future of the Coventry Peace Building.
That's it for legislative items. Oh.
Um, go ahead.
Okay. Miriam Schuman. This is for non-legislative items.
Hello, I'm Miriam Schuman. I actually do not live in Cleveland Heights anymore. I live in the city of Cleveland. However, I do frequent the ice rink at the Recreation Pavilion. And I'm just here to ask, because of my experience in the last several months skating there, beautiful sheet of Olympic-sized rink, which is very rare to find, sadly terrifically underutilized. So my question is, and maybe it's not going to be answered, but I just want to put it out there, what is the vision for the ice rink? I understand that there's been some arguments and residential involvement in different ideas on what should happen with the rec center, and one of the sheets of ice is now used for roller derby. But my question is, at 7 o'clock every morning, there's this beautiful sheet of Olympic-sized rink that no one's using. And I'm driving to North Olmsted, passing the rink every day. I live in Little Italy, which is a 40-minute drive. And I would love to be able to skate at the Cleveland Heights Pavilion, as I did for 15 years growing up here. And I'm sure that there's lots of other people in communities nearby that would enjoy using this beautiful sheet of ice. I did make a proposal to the Cleveland Heights Pavilion Skating Club. If you're not familiar, it's a private club that you pay a membership to join in order to use club-paid ice time on how the program could be grown, along with the Learn to Skate program. And I would love to share that with you, Mr. Mayor. That's it.
Thank you.
Lou Radovoyevich.
Hello, my name's Lou Radovoyevich. I'm at 1808 Meadowhurst. And really, I am here, I think the last time I was here, I was asking you folks for help for the Happy 5K, and you showed up. Bottom line is, Mayor, your team showed up and helped. Counsel, you showed up. We got the funds that we needed for that post-party, and I just thought the entire event was fantastic. I mean, I've been doing this race for a long time, and to have 650 people, an ocean of people running down Lee Road was just a beautiful sight. And it was a beautiful sight because it had a lot of residents there and it had a lot of non-residents. I mean, there's nothing better for me to hear. It's music to my ears when somebody asks me, where do I park? That I know as somebody who does not live in a neighborhood. That is a good thing when we are a destination. So the more events that we can put together like that, the better we are. And that's it. And I just think what was beautiful about it, it was this combination of where the city brought things to the table, and the volunteers in the community came up, and a sort of top-down, bottom-up type of engagement. And that's where magic happens. So the more events that we can do, where you bring the heavy gear, the heavy lifting, the people that we need, and the community can come in as volunteers, good things happen. So let's do more of it. Thank you.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Dorothy Sappo. I live at 3646 Langton Road, and I've been there since 1928, and I'm 90 years old. So I've seen a lot of stuff in Cleveland Heights. And the main thing that I've seen is the desecration of the beautiful trees in Cleveland Heights. Now, I don't know if it's going on in all of Cleveland Heights, but it's going on in my area. And the idea that they would come into our neighborhoods and put a V in the trees. Their solution to not coming back or not doing their job is to cut the limbs off or put a V in the trees. I live, as I said, on Langton. And when I bought my house, I bought it basically because the backyard had beautiful trees in it, and they had a natural overhang, like a halo. And I could go out there and enjoy myself and have different parties and things. But they came in there and cut down, some of the trees actually cut them down. And the ones that they didn't cut down, they desecrated with their Vs. And one half of a tree is there, and the other limb is there, and now that limb has died, and it's just hanging there looking mean and bad. And, you know, they don't go out in Piper Peak or whatever that's called and gate mills and do that to the trees. And, you know, I began to wonder, they do it over all of Cleveland Heights. Because when I clean up Cleveland Heights Road tonight, the trees were beautiful, they were full, and they weren't cut. It doesn't take six feet of a V in a tree to clear the wires. They're supposed to purge the trees, trim the trees, and their solution is cutting the trees down. In my area, I don't know what other, what is happening in the other folks' area. But in Langton, all those beautiful streets back over there, Town Williams off of Williams Road, they're going through there, and the trees are being desecrated. They're such, you drive down the roads, and they're so ugly with this big V and a few branches on that side, and the whole middle of the tree is cut out. Now, I don't know who you go to and who you talk to, but I wish somebody would go in and talk to these people and tell them to stop killing our neighborhood and desecrating the look of the trees and everything that goes with it. The people that come in there, first time they came in there, and I had the police out there because they was cutting the trees down, and they pretend they were foreigners, they couldn't speak English. Well, now they're back again, and I stopped them today because here they are again messing up the trees on Langton Road. And they said that we don't speak English. Well, whoever speaks English and whoever talks to these people, please tell them to stop killing our trees and making our neighborhoods look sick. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, please.
I don't normally do this, but I want to, first of all, I want to thank you for coming and talking to us about this. I've been feeling, a similar feeling generally about how the power company goes about doing this work here in our city. I know that the state of Ohio provides them with a great deal of latitude and authority to go even on people's private property and trim trees in ways that frankly, I think, do a lot more damage than I think is appropriate. And I'm not entirely sure what our authority is as a municipality to regulate the types of trimming that they do and the care that they take to maintain our canopies around our neighborhoods. But you are exactly right. Many people bought these homes on these streets because of the canopy that covered the street in a way that now we just don't see because of the way that the power lines have been trimmed and the way that the trees have been damaged. And to the point where, when the tree goes, people don't even want a tree there on the tree lawn. And so I think that it's a problem, and I'm not entirely sure what the solution is, but it's something that I've been thinking about recently as well. And so I want to, I want to let you know that I'll be looking into what exactly our authority is and what room we might have. I know that there are certain things that we can't do around their power poles, but there are, and the attachments that can be added to them, like the 5G towers, and the state of Ohio has provided a great deal of authority to private companies to put those things in place. But there are maybe some aesthetic regulations that we can provide for, and I'm going to be looking into that at some point. I haven't gotten to it yet, but it's something that I've been thinking about as well. And so I want to thank you for coming here and giving us that, and giving us your perspective on that, because I fully agree with you.
Thank you. Because what you're doing, some of the trees now are actually dying because of what they are doing to the trees.
Thank you very much.
people. Now, that wouldn't solve, the mayor's going to follow up on the regulatory part of this, but there are a group of people that do plant new trees in Cleveland Heights. And if, you know, with your permission, we can get you in touch with them. Would that be?
That's not nearly the goal.
Okay. No, I know, I know. I just thought maybe as an alternative, when these trees go, at least there are some people that could plant some new trees. You know, it's just an alternative. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming here to speak. We always appreciate that. And with that, we're going to move on to legislation. Before we do first readings for consideration for adoption requested, I just want to let you know that we do speak about these, all this legislation in committee as a whole before this meeting. So you may not hear a lot of discussion right now, but that's because we do pre-discuss this in a meeting that precedes this one. So Eddie, why don't you start with, again, first readings for consideration for adoption?
I have Resolution Number 187-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Southeastern Equipment Company, Inc. for the acquisition of a case model 721G articulated wheel loader for the Streets Division of the Department of Public Works, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 188-2024 on first reading. A resolution proclaiming October 20th through 26, 2024 National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by President Kuta, Vice President Russell, Council members Cobb, Maddox, Larson, Petrus, and Posh.
So moved.
Okay, that was a tie.
Second.
There you go. Any discussion? Yes.
The CDC is promoting October 20th through 26th as a National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week because the week is a call to bring together individuals, organizations, industry, and tribal state and local governments to reduce childhood exposure to lead by increasing lead poisoning prevention awareness. This week highlights the many ways parents, caregivers, and communities can reduce children's exposure to lead and prevent its harmful health effects. October is also Children's Health Month, a time to raise awareness about children's environmental health, including the dangers and potential health impacts of lead. Protecting children from exposure to lead is important to lifelong good health. No safe lead level in children has been identified, no safe level has been identified. Even low levels of lead in blood have been shown to affect learning, ability to pay attention, and academic achievement. If caught early, there are things you can do to prevent exposure and reduce damage to your child's health. The most important step that caregivers, healthcare providers, and public health professionals can take is to prevent lead exposure before it occurs. Cleveland Heights has shown its commitment to protecting our little ones, whether we're taking advantage of grants offered at the county and state level, or by obligating $1 million of ARPA funds to reimburse property owners for lead poisoning remediation. Our children are our future, and we have the knowledge to make them safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 189-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to a professional services agreement with Safe Built Ohio LLC, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes.
Next, I have our added one. Resolution Number 192-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Seagrave Fire Apparatus LLC for the purchase of one new Seagrave model Marauder pumper and related equipment for the fire department through the Houston Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we'll move on to first readings only.
First, I have Ordinance Number 190-2024 on first reading, an ordinance enacting Section 331.46 of the codified ordinances of the city of Cleveland Heights entitled Driving While Texting, introduced by Mayor Sarin. Next, I have Resolution Number 191-2024 on first reading. A resolution increasing the compensation of Clerk of Counsel, introduced by President Kuta.
All right, next we have second readings.
I have Resolution Number 154-2024 on second reading. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Corey Clark as a member of the Community Improvement Corporation of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 155-2024 on second reading. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of India L. Burdson Terry as a member of the Community Improvement Corporation of the City of Cleveland Heights, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 170-2024 on second reading. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Audrey Hudak as a member of the Lead Safe Advisory Board of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
This is amazing. Well, in a way, we're really in sync today. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 171-2024 on second reading. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Morgan McKay as a member of the Lead Safe Advisory Board of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 172-2024 on second reading. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of William Fidel as a member of the Community Improvement Corporation of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
A second.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I guess this not only is going to apply to Mr. Fidel, but to all of the other appointments that we have passed. I would just ask the residents to go to our website and take a look at the applications and the resumes of all of these individuals that we have appointed to the boards this evening, to see how well credentialed and well-qualified they are. And I think on behalf of all the city council, we want to thank them for agreeing to do this service, which is being done without any compensation.
Thank you, good point. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Finally, I have Resolution Number 181-2024 on second reading as amended. A resolution encouraging Heights libraries to work toward a solution that preserves the Peace Campus building at 2843 Washington Boulevard, Cleveland Heights, Ohio, 44118 as a hub for arts and culture, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by President Kuta, Vice President Russell, Councilmember Petrus, Councilmember Cobb, and Councilmember Larson.
All right. Your motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Councilman Petrus.
President, we receive emails on all topics imaginable, and for any given issue, people come down on all sides of it. In the case of the Coventry Peace Campus, I have heard loud and clear from the residents and taxpayers of this city that they want the building to be preserved as a hub for arts and culture. I have heard a lot of reasons for why that can't happen. For example, I've heard that the library expressed concern about the Coventry Peace Campus's proposal that they be allowed to purchase the building for $1, the same amount that the library purchased the building from the school district for. My understanding is that the entire property was valued at about $5 million. Even though the tenants are asking for just the building and not any of the land, for simplicity, let's say that the building is valued at half that, 2.5 million. If the building actually needs $2.8 million of repairs, as the library has suggested, all that you have to do is take the $2.5 million valuation and remove the 2.8 million of repairs to get to the $1 purchase price. This is not insurmountable. I proudly drafted this resolution because I share the can-do spirit of Mayor Michael Brennan. I know that if the will exists, surely a solution can be found where the building is preserved as a hub for arts and culture. Mayor Brennan is offering his staff's time, and I too am happy to join working sessions so that we can document the library's criteria and work out a solution that fulfills them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion? Okay, well, I'll just say that I've been in the building dozens of times for the Peace Pops events, for meetings. It's a vibrant asset to this community. There are 12 tenants in there that have all expressed that they'd like to stay to that end. We are meeting right here tomorrow at 6:00 PM with the library board to discuss a possible path forward. It is the library's decision to make, but I agree with Marty Gelfand that, where is Marty? There he are. Yeah, that this is a public entity that was paid for with tax dollars. And I'm glad that we're going to have a say in the outcome, understanding that the library board gets to make this decision. So I would encourage people to attend tomorrow and at least listen to the conversation. You can listen to it live on YouTube or in this room. And if there's no other discussion, should we do a roll call vote?
You can, you don't have to.
Yeah, let's do a roll call vote.
Cobb.
Aye.
Kuta.
Aye.
Maddox.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Petrus.
Aye.
Posh.
Okay, moving on to now committee reports. I'd like to go first. Go ahead, Councilman Maddox.
I'd just like to congratulate the city staff and thank Congresswoman Chantel Brown for the awarded grant that we received for Kane Park and the renovations of $390,000. I'm really looking forward to the city staff working through that as we continue to make these park improvements. But this is going to have a huge impact on what we'll be able to offer the public. And so I just want to, again, congratulate the city staff and thank Chantel Brown, Congresswoman Chantel Brown, for this. This is going to have a huge impact in what we're able to do at Kane Park. And so I just wanted to, again, announce that and just tell the public that great things are happening across all of our parks. And so we're looking forward to this transformation, not just at Kane Park, but you're hearing about things happening at Dennison as well. And so just excited to see things unfolding, even some of the activities at Forest Hill. So you can expect to continue to see us as we continue to move through these park systems and engage with the public to make sure that we are providing for all of our residents, not just specific pockets, but we want to make sure that all of our parks are filled. And this goes a long way towards that. And so again, I just want to say congratulations, and we look forward to continue to have the conversation and talk about future programming and what this can mean for the city. So thank you.
And thank you, Councilman. Councilman Petrus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Housing and Building Committee is meeting tomorrow at 5:00 PM here on the second floor of City Hall. During the meeting, we're going to continue our discussion of tenant and landlord rights and responsibilities, and recommendations from the Racial Justice Task Force. We will also ask for an update on the short-term rental legislation and legislation regarding enhanced building inspections. Thank you, Mr. President.
And Councilman, are you going to add the?
Yes.
What was the topic? I forget.
To learn more about the ordinance that applies to the snow cone truck, send an email to Director Hannah so that we can get that language and discuss it.
Okay, very good.
Mr. President, as an aside, I sent the code sections to all of the council.
Oh, thank you. Councilwoman Larson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on September 23rd. Frank Ford, a senior policy advisor with the Fair Housing Center for Rights and Research, Councilor Maddox and I held a work session to design a scope of work for a data analysis of current lender activity for majority-black neighborhoods in our city. We referenced the recently released Home Mortgage Lending and Cuyahoga County Report, which was compiled by Mr. Ford. The scope of work is not complete, we'll keep working on it. Funding for the analysis, per information from the administration, will be included in the contract between the city and the Fair Housing Center for the year 2024, 2025. Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability Committee will meet October 21st at 10:00 AM. We'll be discussing business recycling, current and future, and safe bicycling infrastructure in Cleveland Heights. Sustainability Coordinator Boateng, Adam Fleischer, and the Heights Bike Coalition will be our guests. Thank you.
Welcome. Any other committee reports? Yes, Councilman.
The Public Safety and Health Committee is going to be meeting on Tuesday, the 15th. Our two primary agenda items are going to be street safety and the deer issues in Cleveland Heights.
Very good. All right, thank you. Any other committee reports? All right, we're going to move on to old business. Any old business? Any new business? Okay, Councilmember comments? All right, Councilwoman Larson?
Thank you. Today is October 7th, 2024. October 7th of 2023, a terrible, terrible invasion of the country of Israel occurred. Since then, this was a sad day for all of us, grieving for all the innocents who have died, who have been injured, who have been orphaned in the past year. I continue to hope that peace is a possibility. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Councilman Petrus?
Thank you, Mr. President. Firstly, the mayor and I met last week. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with him about the things that are on the agenda for tomorrow's housing meeting. Going forward, we're going to meet during the first week of the month, which will be helpful since our housing committee meetings are during the second week of the month. Also, I would like to thank everyone who helped to make this weekend's Happy 5K a success, including Mr. Adam Fleischer, Lou Radovoyevich, Bob Zafara, Melody Hart, Joe DeWitt-Foy, Mayor Sarin, my fellow council members Julie Kaufman, Samira Rhodes, and all the officers and volunteers. We grew the registration from about 385 last year to about 665 this year, and raised about $20,000 for the city's Youth Recreational Scholarship Fund. Really proud of everyone's hard work and look forward to helping again next year. Also, I'd like to thank the library and Heights Tree people for hosting a tree planting at the Coventry Peace Campus. In the spring, I helped with spreading mulch in preparation for planting trees, and on Sunday, I planted my first tree ever. I learned a lot and look forward to joining them again. In case you're interested, they'll be planting trees every Sunday between now and November 11th, from 1:00 until 4:00 PM at the Coventry Peace Campus. And finally, I was invited to an event hosted by the Jewish Federation. While I was unable to attend because it overlaps with this meeting, I would like to note that today, as Councilwoman Larson pointed out, is October 7th, which is the anniversary of the terrorist attacks sparked a terrible and tragic war. My heart is with everyone in our city who has been impacted by this over the last year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Oh, any other comments from council? Okay, very good. So I'll just, with my president's report, just echo the festive 5K. It was fantastic, lots of runners. I unfortunately didn't get there till, kind of, I got there in time for the after-party, which was good. And it was a really wonderful event. Also, the week before, we had the yearly music hop. And this year, we had it on Friday and Saturday, Friday at Fairmount and Cedar, and Saturday, Lee Road between Silsby and Cedar. And it was a great event. The bands were fantastic. I was really kind of blown away by all the musical talent that, there were, I think, over 50 bands that participated. And Coventry was going to do a version of this on Sunday, but that was the day it rained like a real lot, so they canceled. I think they're going to try to reschedule it, but... lot, so they canceled. I think they're going to try to reschedule it, but, you know, it's like getting the V in the middle of October. So I guess we'll see. But next year, I would, if you didn't attend this year, I would strongly suggest that you attend next year. And that's the end of my report. Thank you so much for coming. This meeting is adjourned.